Secretary.
I'm secretary.
Pizza chef again?
Just for me.
Just straight.
It went wild.
No, yeah, you just take advantage of government.
I would have come to you. No, 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 no. Yeah.
I could be wrong now, for sure. Let me go through the rest of that process and see if there is a present structure, but I was.
Oh, yeah.
In this sphere.
And it was like, I just throw them all out there and I'll look up her name when I'm done with this and then everyone back.
So we're seeing the second page.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, because I kept thinking. Yeah.
Really, I really.
A year and a half.
She blacked on you. Find him, but I was by somebody. I sent her to focus down. It's telling fifteen seconds.
Great.
Yeah.
And then we'll remove it.
Flash drives.
So you guys. You and your husband started the business over there in Grandin and then sold it, but you're still working there?
Yeah. I went back, I got done for a while.
Hey, walk away for a bit. What's the name of the guy that he gives his work to when he can't?
Alex.
He's the son, yeah.
He's the son of that current.
Okay, I don't always remember names on the first job. Maybe they could work, yeah, yeah.
We do a little bit of everything around with renovating an entire house right now. It's a new stair system on the interior doors and floors. Cool.
Trying to do our attic space. I just don't know where you're going.
I think so, I'll give my name before I leave tonight of somebody that is great. It was a tight space, he figured it out and.
You went right. The stairs in my house are not done yet.
What's that?
Are they too what?
They're just not, uh, just frame. Structure. Fall down.
No big deal.
Listen, as long as we're talking about stairs, I have a set that can be replaced too.
I don't know what he did. Somebody put him in there, I mean. My parents.
I didn't, like, I was totally hands off with the stairs because I like.
Right. Yes.
We'll just have a friend do it over time?
Yeah. There were a few things that could have been next to you better.
Oh.
I'm still waiting for them to dry and then the oil's on, the oil changes now.
Right.
So I'm kind of like coming down the wire.
Like I.
Forgetting to do my turf and floors when I get home. You hadn't curious as to what actually looks like.
It's a lot of.
When I'm making, trying to make edits or suggestions on a document, I hope that you guys can see it.
Yeah, if you change anything on Google Drive, it's.
Okay.
Does anybody want to?
Oh, with some, with some of them. Some people like that's probably pizza wax right there. Smash on it.
So what bones did?
Uh, clay, uh, well, the straw acts like. You said it's like longitudinal strength and then it's, um, clay and sand.
Okay.
Clay's kind of the glue and the sand is the strength.
Yeah.
And then you put like a pigment in.
Amazing objects, such as strange, so it's like, uh.
Kind of is, yeah, which is a lot thicker, so it'll hold.
Can you just kind of throw it on and level it out?
Yeah, just travel it in and then you have to let it dry and then come in and you like one final, like they call it, um.
I don't know.
Furnishing, or kind of just take out any minor imperfections, like travel. And then, once it's done done, you come in and you.
What tool do you use for the burning?
Just to travel. Some people will buff it too, but I kind of like them more matte.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, so that removes the whole step there. Other people. Finish, which I.
So ready. Do you need the end of the school here?
Is that? Yeah. But it feels really nice on the, it gives you that first contact. Yeah.
Are you ready?
Hello. Oh, we're gonna. Okay, I didn't, I was trying to figure out how to do that.
If the town clerk could give us access to the Croydon private, maybe that'd be better.
Thank you, love. Did he leave? He was on his way, he'd be still there if he was on his way out.
Seriously. Making a rain.
Well, you know, that's what you gotta do. We don't have a board, so without a board, you can't.
Oh, we've got a big old turnout today. You guys are gonna be.
I like things. It's two minutes to go, Ken.
So they're coming, um, Thursday.
She was like, I was trying to find information to tell you.
Yeah.
But she commented some on it. About, I guess, this time, so, and based on the agenda, that was one of the.
She has some details wrong on the Eagle News article too. Six fifteen. Roll call, Karen McKeon.
Angie Bolio.
Good morning. And our first item is public forum number one.
Hi, all of our public. Thanks for coming. Added so, uh, under a minutes to approve, I wanted April to look at it and then, um, for some reason.
It was just me, Beth and Nicole for some reason. I didn't.
It was on Facebook and then I wanted to be.
Think I had that, well, initially as a draft to get feedback from you guys and then intended to get it back to everybody. So that's my fault.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, if we could get it. Forty-eight hours ahead of time. It should go right into the drive on the Friday, once it's been approved, so that that begins the. Okay, I did look there, but it was not there. Yes, yes.
For ease and access.
Yeah, so that was the only other thing.
Um, and on that note, minutes to approve. Should we do the April one first?
Yeah, as long as you guys had a chance to look at it and call it, I know Angie worked it.
I got it, I think they were fine.
It was just.
I got it fixed on my computer, but I can't upload.
Yep, that wasn't the only. I slid this forward, I don't know if that, I wasn't sure if too much was happening here. It's gone. Um, yeah, so I was fine with that, so I will move to accept, um, April.
Yep.
April fourth, um, two thousand twenty-three minutes as amended.
And seconded.
We're in the chair, yeah.
Hi.
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 And we're on to May second.
Thanks for you, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Very detailed minutes.
Sorry, is it too much?
I mean, kind of feel bad that you're writing so much, go through every word, it looks kind of made, do you see anything?
Uh, I started skimming through it, I got about halfway through it, I got busy with something else, but it all looked good to me. From what I got through in detail.
So my few highlighted things in there. Um, were.
They will play follow-up items to me.
Yes.
Which was actually helpful, so.
Okay. And so I know that's been done, and then the Nicole lackey thing. Nicole to link report. What? This is for going to link the report on the website. Include a link in the, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
And then just by planning committee, I don't know what you got for response on that, but I did post it down on Facebook, so that was the other.
All those in favor? Superintendent's report.
Uh, no.
No?
I.
Got it. Um, all right, so I guess we'll just report on what we.
But I did watch, uh, watch that on NCTV, that was riveting. The piece that I think that got edited out, edited out was any talk about, um. Tuition formula. Did not get. It's going to be another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, it's going, yeah.
We decided that, um, we would appoint a member of our school board and a couple of theirs to get together and try to hash out a new contract.
Oh.
Right, well, yeah, we said that the superintendent talked about options for how we determine tuition, so we expressed some willingness.
And, uh, she's looking for a meeting sometime after. So I did hear from Donna. I would like to, if we're gonna do that soon, which I think we probably should, so we'll just coordinate that.
That's what we said at the meeting.
At the meeting, yeah, so that's up to you guys, if you want, if that's good or if you want.
You okay with that, Angie?
Beth, I'm sure this will involve the business administration.
I'm sure though. It would be good.
Well, let's shoot for a Wednesday.
Let's shoot for a Wednesday. That's always like a presentation.
They should have taken minutes from the board for that.
We did have an agenda, we didn't have any votes. Any minutes as far as.
I posted online.
I think I might have even been scribbling down some notes, but it was basically just followed the agenda perfectly and there were the decisions that were made, so.
Okay.
Should be easy to just draft that up.
All right, I'll do that.
So, um, apart from that, um, yeah, that was the big takeaway and the rest was just a presentation on, I shouldn't say just, it was a pretty lengthy, um, presentation on, you know, their, how their schools are doing and what they're up to, so.
Yeah, each of the principals from each level of the schools gave their own presentation intentionally.
Watched it, but you were, it got a little. Good work. So you probably want to post that for about.
Yeah, so when I take minutes.
Yeah.
And I, and actually in, uh, presentation is attached. I put in the Google Drive, but I don't think in the Google Drive right now, I think it was sent to us being.
Um, took some notes on those printed slides, because I asked a few questions along those, so I emailed those as well.
Okay, and were you guys happy with the information that they provided, was it? Helpful, I mean.
It was.
Fairly thorough.
I think the biggest takeaway from, like, everybody who's turned over and they're implementing a lot of programs, uh, they acknowledge that their performance is, uh, a little bit worse than they'd like. They're putting in new programs in place and they went through some of the details on those.
Excellent, okay. And I did see, like, all of the Croydon students are, the senior students are on target to graduate, so that was, that was great to hear. Um, I'm trying to think if there was anything else that stuck out to me, but.
I think what, what I, um, liked about their presentation and what I like about their program is that, um, they're so well connected to the tech center, to the career center, and, um. They, they have. The staffing is the issue, but they have the structure, the organizational structure, to provide a lot of variation in programming conversations with folks. Uh, they're working really hard to try to solve, uh, the issues that they have and, uh, to get people trained up to some of the, some of the needs. So it's not for wanting or lack of wanting, it's just, I really think it is a staff issue and, um. I mean, I, I don't.
How long have they been having staffing issues though, because their performance numbers haven't, haven't been great for quite some time, right?
Depends on the students, you know, I mean, that's the thing, you, you, it's, if you want to judge the whole school, if you want to look at, you know, kind of this segment, so they do have a, they're up, global students do quite well. Um, I mean, that could be social, economic, to some extent it could be, certainly the staffing, yeah.
And do you know the, the history there, um, because I've, my understanding is that this isn't the first time that they've had a big turnover of their administrators.
Been pretty cheap.
Or they probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, Newport. Administration, their senior administrator right now is the high school.
How many VAs have they turned over?
Oh.
Oh, my God, like, once every couple of years.
Sometimes.
Yeah, nine, and we've, I was gonna say, we've had, in the time that we've been in that, we've had four, four superintendents.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to that a little bit too, just in, in the eight years that I was on the board prior, um, I, I, as Jody said, I think it, you know, we saw at least nine super, superintendents, multiple business administrators.
Nine in eight years.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think it had to do with, they had one really problematic member that was making life miserable.
This is, that's more recently than what she's speaking of.
Oh, okay.
This goes way.
Yeah, this is, this is a, a concern for Newport for many, many years.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's has been for as long as I've been involved with this board, okay?
Yeah.
Done, yeah.
So that just makes me think, like, don't hold your breath, right, when you hear.
My, my son is a senior, I, I feel like I've been paying attention a little bit for the last couple of years and, and working a little more closely with. Some issues with the principal and the guidance department and the tech center, and they do, I do have a lot of faith in the administration that's there right now. I don't know the superintendent, um, she did come to our open house, she's interim, I think, provided far more information. But that was kind of the exact it, because she hadn't been here for very long, so, uh, um, that they do have running the tech department and I think they're all very motivated and very committed, but that's just my opinion, who knows?
Okay. Anything else, uh, I wish to talk about with Newport or with respect to the meeting that happened? Most of us were there, so we will watch this.
Just for clarification, are you able to accept these minutes?
I think we'll.
Okay, I will take the notes from the agenda and.
I just need to know for posting purposes.
And then now I think we have the superintendent's.
Yeah, my calendar's screwed up that way.
Frank, you're up.
Sorry, so my report went in a little late and I apologize for that. Basically, it's a continuation of, uh, my memorial service, so essentially it's a three week. Work we're doing is going to be the, with Newport and working out this part, so, um, so there's quite a bit going on. And I, I would say the, the bulk of the work has been around, around special, at this time of year, that's fairly typical, um, what we do.
End of the year state, state reporting. Another thing that keeps you going.
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, they used to let me be the I four C coordinator as well as do the, will become the I four C coordinator, and so she gets the emails when, Frank, that report's due for you, yeah. And so, uh, she's my, uh, yeah, person who keeps me on, but yeah, a lot of state reporting, yeah. Um, update, uh, all the testing is pretty much done down schools, so next few weeks, I should be getting a lot of, uh, reporting in from our partner schools. I notified them all a month ago that we were looking for, we'll be looking for that, so we can do contracts, and we will do that. Those contracts might change a little bit because of the meeting that Nicole and I had back a few months ago, we can build into contracts, the reporting and the monitoring, and they suggested that we just simply make them commit to meet adequacy according to the RSAs, uh, in the contract language, and, uh, that is on them. And if they have problems, uh, you know, we can then go after them, but to try to actually physically monitor all those schools is like crazy, it's not, not really possible, so. To them, because we are kind of, uh, one of the, it causes them to have to think through problems and how to find solutions, which is fine with us, I don't mind doing that.
So, so they said, um, that we should just make them commit to, you know, proficiency.
You know that, you know that list? That's in adequacy, that we should essentially reference that list in their contracts.
Right, but if you make them have kids do testing or?
Yes, yes, yeah, still do the testing, and that's, that's the, 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 the data that we get back really is the test data, and, um, they, they suggested that we could do something here and require all of our kids to come in, total issues for us to try to get that set up. We have to look that way, but we'll see, we'll see how people do, every year they've gotten better, most of the testing that they do do, uh, in programs and studies, I have a pretty good idea where everybody's at, they're getting what they should.
Okay.
Uh, final thing, uh, which aside, just last night, we visited the program that, um, uh, that Jody is setting up with, uh, Jess. Yeah, the, like, uh, it's a Michael homeschool program, but it's, uh, setting it up for, uh, kids who are six through, let's say, who's doing very well at ATI, uh, and having a good year. I think it's another alternative for homeschool families, it's not, we can't support it financially, um, but, uh, you know, it does provide a, uh, an alternative for kids who need a little bit of guidance, uh, in a different kind of. Just in an open house, they just did an open house last night, yeah, so we just talked about it last night.
Okay. Okay, I was invited, but I had a school, I had.
When, um, we do our invitations for invites, it's another choice that we can provide for folks, especially.
Would you mind, on the next public forum, just giving us kind of a, an overview? On the next public forum, would you mind just giving an overview of that, because I was.
And I'm sure you'll have enough, will you have another information on that now, I'm assuming?
It's possible, and we're, we're asking congratulations, but I'm on first because it brings us.
Right, yeah, okay.
Um, but yeah, I think we talked to anybody. Leaders or group, and I'm hoping that it forms, um, so.
Okay.
So, um, I asked Christie about it, she, she.
Right, yeah.
Um, and, uh, she mentioned something about there was an option for, um, the public schools as well to somehow use it, but I didn't really follow, did she get that wrong? Is there some way that public schools would use, or was it?
I think that's not for public schools, there's some suspicion. Other, uh, public school kids could do their community service.
Maybe that's what it was.
At, at Micah, the answer was yes, and I got a question later, thinking homeschoolers to be a service director, so, sure. Yes.
Okay, gotcha, very.
Right, and the other thing I just wanted to really know is that, um, families where you have to efficient homeschool, if you can get it, um, if they need to help support it, and you're going to be, um, very.
I think, um, is that we did have a, I thought a very excellent, that'll be reported on later.
Great, thanks Frank, Nicole?
All right, um, so printouts for the public has. Does anybody here need another copy or you have?
Yeah, because I got one getting up.
Oh, I.
I'll never be able to get it open.
Getting this data done, uh, getting all the testing done was not easy, and so my last student, uh, sent out and came in today, so I said, good, you're spending some time with me. So, I was able to go through all the data this afternoon and get this for you, um, but I apologize for not getting it to you. Um. So just to dive in, um, in K one, throughout May, students in the K one room worked on creating their own nonfiction booklets, they chose a topic and used the computers and classroom books to research their topic, they typed up their books and even chose pictures to enhance each page. Students also continued their daily practice of letter science and lens, reading various words, counting, adding, subtracting, and working together to meet a common goal. In some, um, and they grew the start plants in the classroom, they went home on Friday last week, and they even used the soil that they created from composting the pumpkins in the fall. So full circle was what Scanlon was hoping for. Um, in the two through four room, students wrapped up their unit while practicing their revising and editing skills, they did, some groups practiced working with, by their knowledge of addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, while completing their fraction work. In science, they finished up a unit on some energy, which would be mechanical, electrical, light, thermal, and sound, and they will do a mini unit on tourism in New Hampshire for their last social studies unit, so this week they started researching places that they want to visit this summer in New Hampshire. Recent events, uh, Memorial Day was on a Monday, of course, but on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, we held our annual walk to the cemetery on Cash Street in honor of Memorial Day. We were accompanied by the trustee of Croydon Funds, Steve Michael, uh, Steve Mitchell, as well as Jan Mitchell, Brenda Williams, and two. Man, the O day and Megan Pike. We, tradition where the fourth graders get to put a wreath into the water to honor those we have lost at sea, um, I cannot express to you the excitement for the last two weeks prior to this of some of the fourth graders that were like, I've been waiting since kindergarten to drop this wreath, and, I mean, it was like, slightly dramatic, but very exciting. And, um, so they were pumped, and they put plaques up at each stone for military service members, um, we had a small ceremony, and sandwiches, so we're very thankful for their kindness. We have had Miss Carrie Rochford-Hague visiting us from Turning Points Network, and she's been teaching our students about body safety and adult advocacy, they really responded well to her visits. Miss Carrie was very proud of the audience members that she received, um, they participated well, they were super respectful, um, it was, it was lovely to see, because if you're a classroom teacher, you get a little wild, and they were just so wonderful, so it's, it was great. Um, the last lesson was on Monday this week. And, um, the Dunbar, Dunbar Library Art Show, student artwork was displayed at the library throughout the week of May eighth to the twelfth, we held a little art show for families on the eleventh, students put together a few songs and sang, um, colors of the wind for art, and, excuse me, families viewed their child's artwork. Shout out to Miss Corelli and Mrs. Trader, who put this event on for our students, families, and community members. Field trips, we recently went to the Vermont Institute of Natural Sciences, it was lovely, the students loved seeing all the birds and exploring the woods, um, a couple of highlights I wanted to point out were that they got to see the snowy owl that our school adopted, so Mrs. Anlin went on the website and found that you can sponsor or adopt an animal, so we paid the, the kids did a whole voting process on which animal they wanted. The snowy owl won, and they were very upset we couldn't take it home, um, because that's what adopting means to them, so that was a very difficult conversation, but they were still pumped. Um, there was a raptor show, and there's a hawk that flies over your head, if you've ever been to Vins, it gets very close, and, um, that was just mind blowing, and they have a semi-new treetop boardwalk where, uh, it's beautiful, it's all hidden, have accessible for anybody interested, and, um, they have a spider web that you can climb down into, and the kids loved it. So thank you to the PTO for funding this, and for all the families who work hard to fundraise so that the PTO can then fund this, this is, this is huge for our students. Um, I will say that I had some students saying, I'm going into Vermont, that was very exciting, so shout out to the PTO for helping us do these things. We have lots of end of the year testing, um, so I will get into that in just a minute, um, upcoming events, we have kindergarten registration going on as always, we have three students registered thus far, please, 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 if you have a kindergarten, and you would like to register them, please sign up, um, or you can call me if you do not have internet access, and that'll be great. Um, our last day of school is Thursday, June fifteenth, we're inviting CVS families to join us for our annual family fun day during that time. During that time, we have games, we do, each student gets a little award that's themed. This is going to be a small performance that was written by two fourth grade students. So very exciting. And we'll have a potluck style lunch of burgers and dogs. Lastly, staff PD is the day after. So that's when we will pack up our classrooms if anybody is bored. We always love heavy lifting. All right, so as I said, we have had a boatload of assessments. We've done the STAR reading and math benchmarks for the end of the year. We have done our SAS for math and reading in grades three and fourth and our Fountas and Penel for K to four. There's a lot of data that I went through and gathered for you all tonight. It's a little bit daunting, so I'll go through it and you can pause me as you see fit. And I can even kind of skim over some things that maybe you're like, yeah, just keep going, Becky. That's fine too, because it is a lot. So starting with Fountas and Penel, this is a reading assessment. Students completed this reading assessment in grades K to four. Of those 30 students, 25 students are in the needs development and making progress levels and five are proficient and exemplary. When comparing those students from grades one through four, from the beginning and middle of the school year, we went from 13 students in need development and making progress at the beginning of the year to 14 mid-year and 14 now. We had six students in proficient and exemplary at the beginning of the year, five in the middle, and five at the end. So that is the top of the next page of that graph. If you're looking at the graph, the blue, it's a little bit difficult to follow. Blue is beginning of the year, red is mid-year, yellow is end of year. Then what I do is follow the students from the benchmark last school year to now. And these are the exact same students. I want to make it very clear, we've had some students move in over the summer throughout the school year. It is only those that have taken it throughout the whole time to get an absolute look at what we've got going on. So at the beginning of, let me see, middle of the year, last school year, we had 14 students in needs development and making progress to 14 at the end of the year. We started our year off this year with 12, continue that in the middle of the year. And then this most recent assessment has 14 students that are in the needs development and making progress levels. We went from two students in the proficient and exemplary levels at the middle of last school year, two end of last school year, four beginning of the year, and to three now. So looking at this time last year, we had 14 students in needs development and making progress. And we had 14 students now. And then, so we also had two at the end of year last year and three now. So that doesn't make sense somehow, something along that. UI 14, 14.
So this is basically showing us over almost a full two year period.
Almost a full.
How is the distribution of categories being followed?
Yes, exactly. So that's the Fountas and Penel data. Are you ready for me to move on to SAS data? Okay. So students in grades three and four for New Hampshire SAS assessment, which is a statewide assessment. It took place middle of last month and they were tested in math and ELA. The ELA has broken up into reading and writing. And the assessment scores are based off of the New Hampshire College and Career Readiness Standards. I do want to preface this conversation with a couple of things. Number one, I forgot to put in charts, so I wrote down the information, sorry. Number two, I have some, an email out to the state powers that be in regards to this with some questions about the grading and results and they have not responded. I sent it early last week, so I'm hoping to hear back from them. One of the things that I noticed in the writing portion is that there needs to be some hand scoring that's done. And I don't know if that then changes their score. For example, if a student is currently scoring a one in ELA and they do not have a writing score, once they get a writing score, would they potentially move to a two, for example? Because that's not in there yet, does that make sense? And I have not gotten a response. I asked, they like, um, learning about this math, I asked them, they didn't have an answer either.
Because these are preliminary numbers, basically.
Exactly. That's my understanding. That's why I wanted to say that.
Okay.
Yep, so these are what I currently have. So in the math doesn't change, it's really the reading that we have to just take with a grain of salt.
Okay, so ELA is the only one that's still incomplete.
Correct. Correct. Had one student score below proficiency and three students score proficient or highly proficient. Excuse me. I just want to point out the colors here in STAR. They do the level three as blue and the four is a green. In SAS, they say that if you're a three, that is proficient, that is the expectation. So that is your green, blue is above and beyond. So the colors are just different because of how they interpret it. I wanted to maintain that. In grade three for ELA, we had two students score below proficiency and two students score proficient or highly proficient in ELA. In grade four, we had six students score below proficient or approaching proficient and three students score proficient or highly proficient in math. And four students score below proficiency. And five students score proficient in ELA. Looking at last year's data, the same students that were in third grade last year that are now fourth graders. In math, we went from two students below proficient, maintained two for this year. One student in approaching proficiency, it's up to two now. This is the graph I do not have for you.
Okay, I'm like, where?
Yeah. We had three students that were proficient last year, two now, and one student highly proficient and one student now. So the, the scores are the same, three in the below or approaching and four in proficient or highly proficient for math. From last year to this year. In ELA, we had. Yes, Tom. So in math, we had three students below or approaching. I'm sorry, I said that. In ELA, we had three students last year below or approaching and four students proficient or highly proficient. This year, we had two students below or approaching and five proficient or highly proficient. So while, because we have such small numbers, it doesn't seem like much. But we did have a student move up in the grading. It's a lot to follow and a lot to look at. So I apologize. Questions on SAS?
Are we, so this is all extremely confusing to me.
Yeah, I get it.
How do we take this? How do you take this? And the 22 students that need development from the Fountas and Penel assessment? How do you determine how you're going to get them moved up, like making progress or proficient? What is the plan?
Yes, so there's a couple of things going on here and some I just can't tell you. But one of the big things about the Fountas and Penel is that that includes all nine of our kindergarten students. So when your largest group is your first group coming in, it can potentially affect your data quite a bit. So in this case, it has. And so we have a significant amount of students that are really starting below where they should be. And so we are playing a lot of catch up throughout the year. You'll notice as the students are going through the years with us, our four year old years, they are really growing. I'm not saying it's perfect, but we are definitely making growth as they're coming second, third, and fourth grade. We also have to remember that there's been a lot of outside of our walls factors that have occurred. Especially with the pandemic, I never thought that it would affect us like it has. And like I've said, really, kids wearing masks for years and not being able to hear what people are saying or see their mouth, I think you didn't think that that would affect. I was teaching fifth grade at the time. And by then they had the social skills and all of that to, they were just working through it. And that's what I was just going to say is that our kindergartners have such, it was just such a different impact than our, than the environment I was in at the time. So when I came here, I was very surprised. And I think that, that statewide, I don't want to say nationwide because I haven't looked into it, but certainly schools around us and around our state are seeing the same issue. Data is not where it should be right now. There's a lot of conversation out there about the best way to teach reading. If you've followed it at all, Kathy Ivy is very good at updating me. Because there's a lot of question marks, you know, is a basal reader the best choice? Or is it more teacher-created, teacher-leading? Or is it more, you know, should we be doing something very scripted or should we not? There's a lot of question marks because we just don't know. We just, yeah, I don't know if anybody has any feedback on that, but it's been a very big concern reading has lately. And I think that we're seeing it as well.
Yeah, it seems very apparent in the charts. So I understand the point about the kindergartners maybe needing to get caught up because they're coming in for the first time. But the chart where all of the same students for directional change in the development category. So I would ask a similar question as Angie. And so when you look ahead to next year, what, what changes are you thinking of making? How are you going to pivot and adjust to that to hopefully get that going in the other direction?
My number one priority is getting a two, three, four teacher. To be able to properly teach second, third, and fourth grade, which will then allow us to have a, I feel, better education for our special ed students or students in the special ed program that are very hard to have significant difficulties with making gains from our urgent intervention. That to me is a significant need. And something I think that we're working hard.
Go anywhere or?
We're going to talk to you after about that. Yeah. We'll need to know.
Thank you.
Think we could work that.
Thank you.
Okay, so our last set of data is the STAR. In math, we have 19 students in grades one through four who took the STAR math benchmark. Of those 19, two students had a negative growth rate while 17 students had a positive growth rate. Again, as we say each time, this does not mean that they negatively growed.
Growed.
Scratch that.
You were up to eight last night.
That they did not make gains. It means that the skills score per week that is anticipated is where that negative growth rate occurs. In comparison of scores from the beginning of the year benchmark for this school year, we went from five students in urgent intervention and intervention to three in the middle of the year. And we have five again this, this session. We went from 14 students on watch and at or above benchmark to 16 mid-year and 14 again now. The next chart, I'm not going to go in great depth because it's a lot, but it's the same thing that I did before with tracking from last school year until now. And it's the exact same students once again, so it's all apples to apple for the best we can. But it shows you that at the beginning of the 21, 22 year, we had four students in urgent intervention and intervention and seven on watch and at or above. We now, at the end of the year, this school year, have two students urgent intervention and intervention and nine on watch or at or above. So there has been a nice two students shift there, which is percentile wise, beautiful. We just don't have a lot of students. Okay, so then in reading, we had one student, I'm sorry, we had 11 students in grades three and four take the STAR reading benchmark. One student had negative growth rate while 10 had positive. Looking at that from the beginning of the year, we have maintained our scores with three students in urgent intervention and intervention and eight students in on watch and at or above. So they may have switched a little bit in those two categories, but it is consistent across. I cannot provide you a last year to this year because it's a grades three and four. So it doesn't quite, the grade level is too small for me to be able to quite do that. And that's the same for the early literacy. I can only do it in math. Early literacy, 17 students in grades K through two took that particular benchmark assessment. Of those 17, one student had a negative growth rate while 16 had positive growth rate, which is very exciting because this does include our kindergarten, first grade, second grade students that haven't had as much exposure to school as they are third and fourth graders. In comparison from the beginning of the year, we went from seven students in urgent intervention and intervention to six, and we have seven again. We went from 10 on watch and at or above to 11 and 10 once again. That is all the exhausting data I have for you. Sorry.
Sorry, that is a lot.
So I did it somewhere from the day.
This can be an ongoing conversation for us because I feel like it will be, I mean, I was going to say, I feel like it would be helpful to take it home and read through it. I'm not going to know what the heck I'm looking at when I get home, but I appreciate writing this. I want to help you as much as we can. I mean, clearly getting a teacher is going to help you greatly, but figuring out how to get more of these students. And I know some of that's out of your control, like we talked about the pandemic and the kids just coming in so much farther behind than maybe they have in the past, but.
Now, we hope to encourage kids to come to this summer program. It's a way to just give us a little extra time to work with them and to reinforce what they've learned during the year. So I don't know how our registration is coming with that, but that's an important piece.
Of course, students are coming.
Yeah.
How long is it?
It's in July, so it's three weeks in July.
And how many teachers are present for that?
It's myself and a paraprofessional.
So roughly half the.
Do you feel maybe you really got like training session, whatever for specifically addressing?
It's Fran, that is a reading specialist. Talked to Frank and Beth about it, however, it is not significantly expensive. I think it's a hundred dollars for the book. So it's something like, and I think that we need to do our own investigation of it to make sure we're comfortable with it. But that is definite point of excitement for me right now, is trying to get that for us.
So would you say that we're doing a, we're doing a better job teaching math and reading? Said a takeaway from this, all these charts? Because these ones look pretty good here, the STAR, when you track the same students over two years, you could see that they're all at or above benchmark.
And then the very first one, right? That's a really scary looking graph.
It is. And if there's, you know, you can really think a lot about this. So for example, our best scores are in a test that they do multiple times a year. They have exposure to it, they know it, they know how to use the program. I don't know if you've ever sat down with somebody doing the SAS testing, but it is a fascinating assessment to do because it is more manipulation of a computer than I would have imagined. It can be very frustrating at times. So we spend time with the kids, just showing them, they have some online modules that you can try out to just get them used to what it looks like, which of course takes away from our teaching time. But they have to have some exposure to this assessment. It's tedious at times.
Because we have to do.
We have to do this.
So is that like, I don't know if this is the right statistical word, but is that normalized at all across all the thousands of kids in the state that are taking these tests? Like if everybody's struggling equally to use the program, does that get accounted for in how they scale their results?
I do not know. I can tell you that in the two districts that I've worked on. I can tell you that um, in the two districts that I've worked on this assessment with, both districts, um, students that signatures aren't readily available in the home. And so that can affect a student's ability to use it, use, in my former district, we did not. And that was a whole other layer of difficulty necessary. Um, creating shapes, they have to um, they have to draw shapes with graph paper. They have to create graphs in this, um, which typically you would do on graph paper. And in this, it's on the computer, so it's a very different feel.
K to four students needing to create graphs for this assessment?
Uh, this is third and fourth grade.
Okay.
I'm interested.
I can't imagine third grade I was making graphs, so it's interesting.
It's, right. I mean, it's um, I have, I have some thoughts on it. I think that there is a level of validity that I would not fight on that assessment, you know? Given um, the, let me see, how many students took it? Um, I have sixteen minus, twelve students that took it. Um, there are, you know, two or three that I would say I disagree with that score based on who that child is. So in a school where that small amount took it, you can imagine um. The percentage. Um, so like I said, I've sent some emails because there's one score that I wholeheartedly disagree with. And um, I, I hope it can, I hope the child can retake it. Um, so that's the SASS. You look at the Fanta's and Pennell, it's a very different beast in and of itself.
And you like, you like that test?
I, I love the assessment. I think that it's very telling, but it's grueling. Um, it's questions, as you know, that you don't typically talk about. So it's a much more deeper dive than um, what happened in the story.
Actually, I wanna come back in to do another round of that.
I would love it, yeah, anytime. Summer's better because I'm busy.
Asking a lot of inverting questions.
So, yeah, so many inferences, why did the character do that? What's the hidden message in the story? What is the lesson we can learn? Um, because it's, it's really telling us where our kids at with their comprehension of a test.
Is not a scan drawn.
No, 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 no.
Um, so with, sorry.
Yeah, bring us back.
Our first graders that are below proficient, what, what do you do? Do you send them off to fifth grade? Do you recommend that they redo fourth grade? What?
At this time, we are continuing their education onto fifth grade. Um, students are invited to summer school, as Frank mentioned. The data that we have gets um, delivered to their next school. If a student in fourth grade has an IEP or a 504, we meet with the school district typically beforehand to discuss that child and their progress.
Um, okay, so if, say, a fourth grader is continuing on to Richards and they get the data on the student, do they ever say? The student's not ready for fifth grade? Never, ever.
Uh, not in my experience.
There, there's um, some very strong research about retention at that age. So it's far better to have like a multi-age program, like we have our K one. Uh, where we might want to suggest to a family that, that after K and after one, that maybe they stay for a second one. Before they, you know, cross the street or, you know, come to the next building.
Okay.
Um, and it's uh, emotionally, the impact is much less, especially with.
At that age.
Yeah.
Yes.
But when you try to do something at fifth grade, middle school, the, the impact on the child's, how they see themselves is really negative. And it's, it shows up later on in research.
So.
And what you have to do is be individualizing and personalizing that learning and try to help those kids um, move forward. Even if they're.
About the long game is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Get them, get them done by the end of their educational career rather than focusing on what their number grades.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So I do, like, that makes sense to me and I appreciate that explanation. So two things about that, one is just a personal experience because my son, when he was at Creighton, had an IEP. I forget what grade started at, sort of started sooner. Um, and then was transitioned from, uh, he was a fourth grade, first, fourth grade class here. So fifth grade into Montessori, um, did his first year with an IEP in Montessori and then tested out of it that next year. So I do feel like age, you know, retention was harder for him and then he got to a point where, I don't know. They're just maturing.
Yeah, they're, and every, every child is different too. It's really hard to generalize about what's the best thing. You really have to look at every individual and try to figure it out.
Right.
You know, it's a good partnership between the school and the family. Uh, you can usually come up with good strategies, so.
So how often then, at the K one or first grade, which is where you prefer to recommend they stay back? How often are we doing that?
Uh, this is my second year, we have not retained at that level. I don't know about fire to me.
Okay.
Seems like it'd be pretty exceptional at K and one that you would make that decision. Really struggling to catch on, I would presume.
Yes, and it's, it, again, it's a very interesting line, based on the child.
Yeah.
And it has to have strong family support. If there is not family support, uh, you're making a.
Yeah, cause then that's gonna poison the waters of the kid too.
Yeah.
Parents are gonna be complaining in front of the kid and the kid's gonna be all frustrated. Tough spot to be in.
Yeah, cause there's no clear solution.
Yeah, I had, family uh, switched schools. Um, because they knew at a later grade, they knew it was the right thing. Uh, and the kid, the, the child in this particular case was okay. And uh, and, but didn't wanna stay with the same set of friends because they would know. But if you change schools, nobody knew. And so literally a move from, a family literally moved from one community to another to change.
Change schools and help them back.
It was an amazing result.
Cause the emotional toll is brutal for a lot of the students.
At that, more at that age then.
Yeah, everybody, you know, everybody felt good, probably the most important person felt, got away with the kids.
You said it was SASS that you have issues with sometimes as far as the.
The teach, the testing.
You're happy with STAR?
Um, I think that STAR does a decent job at telling us where our students are at.
Yeah, of course, the only problem with SASS is you can't get rid of it.
Can't get rid of it, you can't retake it and.
SASS?
Yes, and.
And you hate to just throw more tests at them.
Right.
Um, I know we talked about iReady at one point, which would be more of a replacement for STAR.
For STAR.
For STAR.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What might be an interesting benchmark to have in these reports is just, what's the state average for each of these guys? See, everybody's taking the same bad test.
I think that data will.
How we compare.
Yeah.
I think that data will come out after everything is scored statewide. Yeah, so would, I think it would be helpful to look at that in comparison to where our students are at, for sure.
We're.
Teaching. It would be me. It would be me.
Not bar.
Sorry. It would be me.
Yeah, they, they have all that in there.
Well, I would, I would call the state, I would, I would have them do it.
No, well, the website doesn't allow you.
I have some ideas.
I got it.
Sure.
I'll help her. But I have some school-based ideas too, that I think the board can help with.
Okay, so.
My turn. Yeah. Promise, I won't make. Listen, if you're not, I know, they're not good chairs. Um, that's right. So some of the information that I have for you tonight is just a continuation of the, of the May meeting. Um, there are new staff members for the teaching position. Um, and we are requesting a non-public after we finish tonight to talk a little bit further about that. Um, to date, I do not believe we've received an educational assistant application. Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong.
No ma'am.
Okay. Um, so we continue, we did, um, after our last meeting, we actually did another round of advertising to um, again, try and attract some folks into our, into our system.
For the sake of uh, getting more of the word out there more, do you wanna just give a brief overview of what education assistant role is?
We're looking for a paraprofessional. Um, we are very flexible, it could be a shared para in the classroom as well. Demics, um, that they would be assisted.
A five and three-quarter hour a day position, five days a week, um, through the school year, so about roughly a hundred and eighty days. Right, cause we give a couple in the beginning, a couple on the end, and all these days.
Correct.
Are we advertising paid band scale?
We don't, we generally don't advertise the pay scale. High school, high school diploma, but no certification.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, through the grants management system, um, and this goes directly to um, some of the work that Nicole presented this evening with regards to testing. Um, we are utilizing the ESAR funds to, um, we have an interventionist in the building, um, generally halftime during the week. Um, and we're gonna continue with that through the next school year. So we'll continue to fund, um, to support um, those areas where kids need additional um, resources and assistance. Oops, I wanna go too fast here and get my mouse, it'll be better. Um, as we conclude the school year, obviously, we have some successes and we have areas um, that we need to work on. Um, what we're particularly happy with at this point in time are the strides that are being made with the new Port and Sonoma School Districts. Um, there have been meetings on, with both administrations. Um, some I've been involved with, some Frank and Aaron have been involved with, the school board's been involved with. And there are some really nice contracts, um, moving along right now with regards to um, our five to twelve students. I'm gonna just quickly go through some of the revenue pieces. Um, we talked a little bit earlier in the year, certainly our budget, um, reviewed these areas. We don't have significant revenue sources. We basically have three, which is your taxes, um, state education aid, um, and state education tax, that's pretty much it. Um, budget to current, um, we're gonna be down just about ninety-five hundred dollars in revenue, which is, which is certainly within the margin of error. That actually came completely through on um, the adequacy education. They changed that number back in the fall. Appropriations are all up to date. We have uh, one more town appropriation, actually, I received it today. Um, so we're completely um, cleaned up for the news, for the fiscal year twenty-three. And we begin the school new year, the new school calendar financially on July one. Trust fund balances are listed, those don't change very much, current cash balance in the bank, three hundred and thirteen thousand. We had some particular items at our last meeting that the board wanted reported out on. So I too have handouts because um, folks won't be able to really see these things. So the first topic we're looking at is adequacy aid. Um, how that's determined, um, how it's calculated. I'm gonna give you all three issues, cause then I won't have to, okay. So adequate education is actually determined. Um, adequate education is determined by state RSA. It's not something that the school district makes up, it's not, their school board makes up. Um, there's a particular formula that drives what is adequate education. Um, the second sheet that I'm going to give out, um, is also related to adequate, adequate education aid. Um, this is not a full formula tonight, I only wanna focus on average daily membership. And do you guys want paper copy or do you want? Okay. You have your computer?
Yeah.
There's a couple more. So when we, when we're in a space, when we get our nice screen back up, we would put it up on the screen, it would be a little easier to see, but.
This is good.
Okay, so adequate education, how the cost of an opportunity for an adequate education is determined by RSA one ninety-eight thirty-eight through one ninety-eight forty-two. You can look that up, you go right online, you type in RSA one ninety-eight, it's all going to come up for you. Um, I guess the, the big question is, who's included in the adequate education model? So this sheet that you have in front of you, it looks like this, it's the Excel spreadsheet. I highlighted, the yellow highlight is the Creighton School District. As you move across, you will see in, under base attic, base adequacy, excuse me, sixty-eight point three-four ADM. So that's the driving number, that sixty-eight point three-four ADM includes K through twelve. So if you look at the law, the ADM are students who attend a school, a district-operated school in New Hampshire or other state. Newport, Sonoma, that's generally special education placement.
ATI.
ATI, yeah. Um, we don't have any preschool, preschool students are not included, student wouldn't count for our ADM. And homeschool students only if their academic course rate of point one five, one five ADM per course. So that would be calculated at the school where the child was, was attending. If it was in excess, then you would get some form of average daily membership. So average daily membership really is attendance. So student attendance is derived by the one. If the student is in school all day, they get a one. If they're in school for partial, partial of the day, they get a fraction of that. So at the end of year, so when Nicole talked about end of year reports, the biggest end of the year report is the attendance report. And the attendance report is what happened all year long. It is a state submission. It's due on the twenty-third of June this year, which is really early.
And I wrote it down.
And you wrote it down, there you go. Um, and that ADM report, it is what then moves into the adequacy model for FY twenty-five. Okay, that one is gonna move forward because they're looking at. It's a two-year lag, which is different than our other conversation about cost per pupil. And this is where it gets confusing because cost per pupil, we use current year ADEO. So anyways, so the adequacy formula, you can see sixty-eight students last year, base adequacy, which is three thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents for next year. That is, that is what the district gets. So then when you go down to Creighton, you'll see that our base adequacy is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-five cents. And it, you have a budget of one point seven million dollars.
Where's that court case?
Okay, uh, that court case is actually in process, right now. Yes, yeah. Yes, he's very good, so that, that is in process. Then, to that base adequacy, there are three or four add-ons. If you have um, free and reduced students, if you have um, English language learners, if you have special ed students. There's another portion of funding that gets added to that. And again, this all gets determined by the end of the year reporting, cause all of these demographics get reported. Um, the one thing that I will say to folks, um, it's really important that you fill out those free and reduced applications. Doesn't, we're not part of the National School Lunch Program, but the free and reduced application actually funnels into adequacy. So it's just important to fill them out and send them back. Um, so tonight, our purpose for this evening's discussion was just to talk about the membership, the ADM, and how it's calculated. So hopefully I've provided everybody with that piece. I'm not gonna go through the whole formula tonight because we can kinda continue on. School board, um, and in my, my budget memo, there's a link to the um, the AD, the adequacy formula. Um, Mark Mangello from the state of New Hampshire does a really nice job taking you through the entire adequacy formula. It's twenty-three minutes, if you get a chance, if you really are interested in this, um, you, you'll understand it by the time you're done.
I think that this came up because the question had been raised on, um, like, if we get the adequacy aid for students that are at other schools, which we do.
Mm-hmm.
But do the others, is in their ADM?
No, no, they can't. So, and I think this funnels though into the conversation. No, no, they can't. So, and I think this funnels though into the conversation about, um, tuition in Newport. So we've now had another conversation with another district that's not using that complex DOE 25 model. So the DOE 25 is your financial, your big financial report and they're basing it on their DOE 25. That's how they're coming up with the tuition rate.
Who?
Newport.
Okay.
Which.
And Son of E's.
Son of E is not, no, not at all. That's right. That's right. Very different approaches. Yeah. So I think that's where we really want to.
Try to.
Try to put our conversation around the tuition. But Newport has a very specific DOE based model for determining our, so when their ADM goes down.
Which it is.
Our tuition goes up.
We.
We, which is what we've seen over the last two years. We've seen double digit increase over the last two years. So the only school that I know that's higher than Newport right now is Vermont, over in Vermont, Hartford. They're 20,500. Newport's almost 20.
What about Hanover?
Hanover, I don't even.
25.
25. They, but they don't even give the, because normally the way these tuition agreements work, if you give a baseline, so for us it's $19,000, say. The way we structure the agreement with the, with, um, Hanover is we'll pay the baseline. The parent has to pay the rest. So we don't ever go beyond whatever the school board determines is their top end. So that's how we can, um, that's how it funnels into your adequacy aid. And it's pretty, sorry, the number is so low.
So this money.
Yep.
Comes from the property tax, the, the state portion of the property tax.
Nope. That's a second, that's a second piece. So there's two pieces. We're not going to go, I wasn't going to go that far into the formula, but as we go down through the formula. The adequate aid, which is what we receive at the district. So we receive a check four times a year from the state of New Hampshire for your adequacy aid. So it's $350,000. We physically receive that money in our bank account. Then there's a second number. So the state has 350 million dollars or 344 million dollars that they raise. Which is on your tax bill for state tax, state education tax. That's the amount they raise across the whole state, 344. A portion of that comes to Croydon. So that, your, your total aid, your total aid to support an adequate education is the adequacy plus the state enhanced tax. We don't.
This is totally off subject, but how do they calculate how much Croydon gets of that state tax?
It's in the formula. I, I, I will go through the formula, but it's.
That's what they refer to as the SWF.
So the SWF is on your tax bill, you'll see it's a dollar 44, a dollar 33. It's a percentage of per tax bill. So.
So all Croydon residents, does all of that money come back to Croydon?
All of that money, you're raising that money in Croydon. You are then giving it over to the school. The, the town office gives that to us in their appropriation. It doesn't come to us from the state. It comes from the town because they collect it in taxation. It's just part of, so your tax bill has four items.
So the state mandates that we pay it, but it all goes to Croydon.
It all goes to Croydon. They raise it in taxes. They just mandate that it gets raised at the state level. Yeah. So there are some really good resources for the adequate, adequate education model. I would direct you to the video because it is very good, um, real easy to understand. And actually there are some changes being proposed to adequacy as we speak. Number one, we have a lot going on. Um, and two, the state actually, um, is looking at the model as well. It's probably a couple of years off. But there's some, some real door ringing on.
And that would be to raise.
To raise it. Yeah.
Which means that you have less coming from property taxes, but they're going to have to get the taxes from somewhere else.
Well, we have to watch them. We have to watch and see how they swing it. It's going to come from someplace, right? Yeah. Well, I wouldn't hold my breath on that, but, um, any questions on ADM and adequacy? Again, there are links right in my budget memo. You can link right into them.
Did you say that we, that, um, is there more that we wanted to cover next time? Learning more about.
Do you want to learn more about this or do you want to watch the video and then maybe we'll?
I'd love to read this at home.
Yeah.
And watch the video and then get back with questions.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
What?
I'm a minute.
Okay. Yep. So the, the second, um, item that the board requested information on were, was energy costs. So what I did is I put together, um, a PowerPoint. Everybody has a copy of it. It's just a really, here you go. And it's on the drive as well. So our current energy supplier is EverSource. Um, we don't have any other options. What I did do is I went back as far as I could to get historical data. I think I'm going to use my report first and then we can go into the PowerPoint. So I went all the way back to 2020 and I did look at the pocket where I see the big, the, there's two-fold. You can see the kilowatt hours for all the years, 20 to 23, October, not a huge fluctuation, November, little bit in 21. Could have been a cold month. December, very steady. January, very steady. February through May. So it's in also in the seconds like this. Sorry. If we had a screen, it would be a little easier, but, um, so you can see 2007 kilowatts. And then this year, a thousand, but the reason that it's a thousand is it looks to me like, yeah, it was so brutal. And it, that's what it looks like in the data. March, 921 double in 22 and you can see 23.
Yeah. Was that because? I hate to blame everything on COVID.
Well, we're going.
Less electricity in 2020.
Well, in 2020, well, 2020, you can see the numbers are very consistent with 21.
Yeah.
Um, we left in March. And again, March, April and May, but we used our buildings because we actually thought from here. So buildings were open and there were people in them because they did all the remote here.
So something happened.
So in 22, you can see the kilowatt hours really ramp up. 23, just in this block, the February through May. Then if you go to the chart to the left-hand side of that, you can actually see, I broke out the cost per kilowatt hour. In the, you can see the headings on the top. So the cost per kilowatt hour, I did the percent increase over the prior year same month. So you can see that, um, in April, the cost per kilowatt hour over last year, same time went up 42%. So, um, we're not locked into an energy agreement. Yeah. We're going to look. Yeah, we're definitely going to look because I have a couple of ideas on sourcing energy that might level out. Because you'll see that our cost per kilowatt hour really fluctuates as you go through all of the data.
So the cost is one thing and that's.
Yep.
Probably going up or.
Yep.
But what's, how about the usage side?
Well, so then that's the next question. Do we need to have an energy audit done on these buildings? So the very last slide, I did give you a comparison 20 to 23. You can look at the bar graphs. It shows you where, how it went up. But the very last slide that I did, um, this is the actual analysis of where the energy is being used in the building.
How did you get that?
EverSource actually, based on the data that we have in about our buildings, they provide this to us. So 38% is some sort of an appliance, whether it's the refrigerator, which is really old. Your coffee machines are going to be tied into that probably. Then you have electronics, which are your computers and your lighting. Our heat source in the building is, uh, fuel oil. Yeah.
So, but nothing comes to mind when you look at February.
Nope.
Say, wow, because it's such a big jump on.
So my question, so then I also looked at, in this data, you look at the temperature. So you look at the temperature on your degree days and the degree days, we actually had a really warm winter.
In 2020?
In, in 23, 22, very consistent, very similar temperatures. And actually this, is this one? I don't think this one had it. Yeah. If you're average temperature, you can see it.
My attention was drawn towards it going from 2021 to 2022.
Yep.
Where it looks like it jumps.
Yep. So 21, so we, we closed school in, at the end of March in.
2020.
2020. 2020.
So that doesn't.
The end of March. So it wouldn't, they don't correlate.
No.
So I think probably the next step is to get an energy audit. I'll have EverSource come out, but I wanted to provide you with the data so that you could actually see. I just look at that one block and say, there, there's something going on.
Yeah, something changed.
Something is changing in that particular realm that doesn't make sense to me because you're double and more.
And it's not consistent throughout the year.
No, it's not. Cause you have six months, seven months where it's, it's consistent. Like it's within the, the realm of normal.
And she only just recently bought the owl. So it's not the owl.
It's not the owl.
It's not the owl.
The electric, using, the electricity using item that only use those months that might be linked to.
To use extra, right. To use an electric heater.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, we'll brainstorm. We will, we will brainstorm to see if there's anything over there. The only thing I look at and I say, you have a really old refrigerator, like you have some older appliances that could chew up.
What we did do, we started using ventilators and.
Yeah.
Those things.
They don't ever, they're never on.
Yeah, but.
They're never on.
And they would be running all year.
They'd be running all year and they'd be running in, in through here.
Probably bought a space heater in 2021.
Wait a minute.
If you're using.
Well, to keep the pipes from freezing. There is.
22, sorry.
A space heater under that.
Well, that would chew a boatload of. And, but the interesting thing is like our temperatures this year, other than that one very, that one spot. Like I can't see that happen unless it's running all the time in March and April. Dirt, floor crawls. Yeah.
It would be so much more effective just to get heat trace on those pipes.
Yep.
It just, it just warms the pipe practically up to.
So we.
Unless it's PVC, I don't know.
All I can tell you is.
They better not. We will, here's what we're going to do. We will get Chris, we'll get Chris to come over. We'll take a look at that, but I'm also going to schedule an energy audit with EverSource and have them just take a look at everything. Doesn't cost any money. They'll just, they'll come out and do it. But there's all the data for that. Um, so the final thing I wanted to present you with tonight was the end of year projection. Six, um, as of my writing of this report, I'm looking at about 189. Float up a little bit because the auditors will make a couple adjustments from, looks good. Yeah, can't complain about that. And I did provide your expense and revenue reports, reports. And if there are questions on those, um, certainly don't hesitate, just reach out and. Hey, what's this all about? But you guys take, that's cool. And that's all I have. If anybody has any further questions.
Thank you for doing all that. That was a lot. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And we say.
Yeah, no worries.
Boatload of data that I did. So thank you so much for doing that. Yeah, I knew it was going to be a long meeting tonight.
Well, the, the board had requested the information. So, you know, that's, that's where we go.
That's where we go. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
Four.
One thing.
Was that caught on the owl?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sometime in the last couple of months, uh, you were talking about the, the brand having used for improvements to the building and having struggles, uh, with. Those communications and actually being able to do it. Have there been any further communications in that?
I have not done anything more with that part until we decide really, um, exactly what we want to do. And then we will need to, um, talk with the folks there so that they will give us guidance. So we don't have to go out and hire.
So I can give you a little guidance on that because I'm going through it right now. We were really waiting here for the strategic plan to get further along. So, because that may determine how you're using your buildings. In order to do work to these buildings, I have now learned with the ESER grant that there are several stages of interaction that you have to have with the Department of Revenue. That require fire plans, that require historical society approval, that require. So once we determine that, then we have. Two is fine. That was this June 30th. The ESER three funds are, I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Will some energy efficiency improvements be?
Uh, yeah. Well, the, the big thing, it's heating and cooling and ventilation is what they're really targeted in.
That should be able to follow that.
Might, yeah, might. So we'll do this first. We'll get the, the energy audit done.
Yeah.
And that may help us too, to determine how to best use those funds. So you have to use a portion for education, which is the interventionist that we have for Nicole. But you do have to use some money over here for facilities. So.
Is there a date at which you start feeling uncomfortable about not having more direction? What's that date?
October. I'd be pretty uncomfortable if I didn't know where it was going by October.
So we'll, um.
Yeah.
As we adjust our goals.
Yeah.
We know which one to put first.
Yeah.
We were, uh, at the, at last night's meeting, um, we were talking about trying to get something put together, wrapped up by November.
Yep. So that should be good.
Yeah. So.
That should be good. Yeah.
All right. Um, shall we move on then? Policy committee?
Good to move on?
Yeah.
Policies. Okay. I don't know how this next piece works.
Yeah.
I don't know how the next piece works because I've read all of them. They're on there. Yep.
I don't think you even need to do that. I don't.
Have you read them?
Have you read them?
The only one that I have not, well, I mean, I read because I was there at the meeting. Yeah. So the only one that's not in there is the use of.
I, I looked at the, um, GBCD and the IJOC. Those are the two for tonight.
That there's five of them on the list?
So tonight you're only moving forward though, Eve, use of school property. The others are all first reads.
Okay.
So you're not.
Look at them. If you've got feedback on them.
If you have feedback.
And then they'll bring you back for a second read, but incorporate that feedback.
As I recall, last time we read it, we just wanted a few minor modifications.
Yeah. And I think that I'm totally fine with the, um, all of them, but the one that we're talking about, the use of school property and facilities.
I still have. I was going on.
No, it's two of them. The safety and joint house management and the use of straits is the general condition. The volunteers and the criminal records are checked together, but they're very clear information.
I'd say let's just give them a read.
Shall we start with the ones that are on their final read?
Yes. So that would be, well, we're not going to read that one, right? Cause it's just. Yeah. So policy K F. K F, you're just, you're voting on it tonight. You're basically saying.
I don't know what K F is.
K F is use of school property and facilities. It's the last one on the list. Says third read.
I have it open if anybody needs it.
So policies are all lettered. They're coded. Yeah. So on the next agenda, you'll have them.
Were there any changes since the last reading?
No.
Then I'd, I'd say we.
Good.
Because I don't think we need to go through it again.
No. All right. So I'm.
A bit longer.
So I'm going to move that we accept the use of school property and facilities policy.
Second.
Whatever. Yep.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Done. Thank you.
Now your next four, you're just moving forward to a second read unless you have feedback.
Sorry, I was going off of the first draft agenda, so I didn't. I did read. I did read two of them.
Thanks, that's perfect.
And I could give you, I mean, I didn't go through them in like real meticulous detail.
So you have some questions or comments on them? Okay, so on.
On whichever you want to do, maybe the GBCD.
I don't know what that means.
Investigation.
GBCD.
Yep, criminal records, check the background.
Okay.
So this one seems like it's really just being driven off of an RSA, RSA 18913 A to C. And I was trying to reconcile it with the RSA and it seemed like some items, and I don't know the answer to this, it's just something maybe you go back and look into. I don't know that the RSA was explicitly requiring. I highlighted it. So I wasn't, wasn't clear to me if the RSA requires a back, that's one thing I wasn't clear on. Like if the RSA is requiring both or if the extra background investigation is just something they're sort of layering on top.
It's both. It's both. When you put, when you put prints in, you're you're getting both. We get, it's both.
So they happen at the same.
They happen at the same time, yeah.
Yeah.
So the background is specifically toward previous employment. Determining whether the person is qualified or has been found guilty of any criminal activity. So that's essentially just determining work qualifications and doing.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. For anybody that wants to.
So you're not, you're not attempting to do some sort of a character background?
No. Nope. No, and this is, this all runs through the New Hampshire Department of Safety, so.
Those reports come to me. I get to keep it for only a few days and then they have to.
So the next one that I just, I had a question on was the special provisions for educator candidates, bus drivers and bus monitors. It didn't seem that, well, at least from what I saw, the RSA didn't require any sort of special provisions. I mean, they're all required, I think, to have the background checks, but there's nothing extra different. So I'm wondering what the special provisions are there.
So transfer, transportation has their own, so for example, Butler Bus Company, they have to go through a specific agency for bus background checks. If they're, we also, if they're working, what's the other category?
It just, there is a section called special provisions for educator candidates, bus drivers and bus monitors.
Section D.
So I don't know that it's that. In my, in my experience, it's not that different.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah.
It's the same.
It's the same, and and I think when we were doing the policy, there were a lot of pieces in it that were repetitive and we took a lot out that one.
Everybody's in the same.
Yep, yep, yep.
Did you take that down as something?
Yep, yep, second.
Is it, is it possible that there's something in the RSA that drives you including this, these statements?
Me?
Who ever read?
No, because the RSA is referenced. It's, it was very redundant, but it was a long policy that this was.
Right, and it can be.
I don't think I was involved in that one, but in the ones that I have been, I feel like we've been able to take out a lot of.
And there tends to be so much repetition in the sort of thing that it's real easy to end up.
Yeah.
Stuff.
Yeah.
So the other one was the additional criminal record checks, it says, to the extent anytime after hire or appointment to a position within the district.
No, that's something you're empowering your superintendent to do.
So at any time.
At any point in time, if he or she. If he receives information that might relate to this, he could definitely request other.
Yeah, because.
There are those. Yeah.
They should change jobs or have interruption in employment. You don't get, you don't get another, another check on.
Yeah.
I understand the rationale.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear with it because
Yeah.
it might make sense in some of these policies for tracing both of which, you know, I'm not saying we want to do this, but it just makes it so it's easier to understand.
Well, this policy is required.
The policy says you have to, but you might add two or three items just because you want.
Yep.
And it'd be nice to have those labels. This is a, like a policy versus a legal.
Yep, yep.
As far as the additional checks, the first statement, to the extent permitted by law. What are what are the restrictions based on law that might prevent him decide to do a follow up?
The law, the law only says that you have to do it when you're vetting them.
When you're vetting them as a.
It says you have to do it at that point, but would restrict him from doing another one six months later.
The law does restrict.
Doesn't restrict.
I think this is.
But I think if that was abused, there there would be.
There would.
There would be, I mean, if someone, if I felt. I would look for redress.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I'll be honest with you, I have not ever, I've been a superintendent for a long time.
So somebody has because the attorneys that write these, they look for every, every scenario. And then you as a board can decide to remove the pieces that are.
So the next one that I had a question on was the administrative protocols and procedures section where it says that our protocols may allow, so so when I look at the deeper in the RSA, it gives you a list of like these are the reasons that if they've done these, you can't hire them.
Yep.
So it's saying, just add things to that list if we want.
So the trainings that we've had on that have been by the DOE's attorney has been. There have been cases that would have been one of those charges to something lesser that now no longer shows up as a plea deal or because detectives screwed up, there's all kinds of reasons why that might have happened. And people have slipped through that probably shouldn't have been hired. That had been a deeper look at some of those things. There might have been a, a, a red flag that said maybe, maybe there's more here than, whatever, but so that's why they've asked us to do that too. And that's their correction.
Right, so like.
So they, they give you the leeway of, you see the records check and see some details in there that although there was.
Right.
So you, you, when you see those details.
I sit.
You see information beyond the just standard.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it can get, it can get very extensive.
Yeah, and I sit down with people, when that happens, I sit down with people and I sit, just talk to them about this.
One of the examples that's in the, like, in the sentence here, it says, for example, prostitution, theft, et cetera. Theft is already on the list. But the list was pretty thorough.
It was pretty extensive.
Sex offenses and
Yep.
things like prostitution actually wasn't on the list.
Yeah.
But this would allow the superintendent to just use any conviction he or she wanted.
Basically, and being a value judgment.
Yeah.
Having to balance a lot out.
Yeah.
Because people's lives change also.
Yeah.
You make mistakes when you're young.
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
That's the worry with something like this is that.
Something like shows up, you sit down and talk with that person. You need to make sure that, that, you know, there'll be a safe employee and things are are better and there's a lot that has changed around alcoholism, for example, because our prime, they did whenever alcoholic or whatever. You couldn't hire them and now is in recovery and they're being treated and they're healthy. You can go ahead and hire them and be aware, but it's not, it's not, it's not treated in the same manner that it once was.
That would be on the list though, like the prescriptive list that's in law, like this would be more, you see that they had a DUI when they were 18 and decided that they didn't want.
They'll tell you that different superintendents have different levels of tolerance or a lot of responsibility in some times.
Again, I don't have like a strong opinion, I was just raising it or awareness that I, if this isn't required, we're adding this on top. It could be a good thing, I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yes.
So it sounds like that statement just gives you some leeway to make a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't think it allows you to hire them if they did have one of those.
Not on that other list.
Not on the other list.
It only gives you leeway to bar someone from being employed for something that isn't on that list. Doesn't give it.
For something that gives him concern but isn't already required.
And the next one with the contractor and vendor provisions, I don't, that's like a similar comment as the one before. I I thought that like they're all sort of at the same bucket anyways, I don't know that we need to add additional provisions, so I, I don't know if that required the RSA either. This is maybe a little more into it, I don't, I don't know the answer on it, but.
Well, we, we do require our contracted servers, so we use a lot of contracted servers for direct construction.
Yeah.
And we do require background checks on all those individuals.
Yeah.
When they come in.
That was already covered, like anybody who has routine contact children need to have background checks. So I thought it might be redundant just having a section.
Well, some, some folks don't know they need to do that though. And I think it's important to give whomever your superintendent is, you know, this is, the policies in a lot of instances become the the playbook. You know, that's the guy that you get to do principal and that's the first thing they look at are your policies because that's what kind of drives
I was.
I know, I know. The first time I got it, I'm like, I got it, throw them, give me a graph.
Contractors and vendors would need to receive training on child sex abuse prevention. Is that, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but it just seemed a little out of place, I don't know if that's in the RSA in the right policy, but or is that.
It's referencing 18913.
18913, which is the.
It's within the RSA.
Well, maybe just double check that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, no, this was, I'm fine with this one, those are the points today. The other, the training of the superintendent, I don't think was in the RSA, but it's not a bad.
Not a bad thing to do.
Yeah, I was just calling out, it's not like we have to do, we're voluntary. And then, sorry, anybody else? I didn't want to move on before anybody.
No, all your questions gave me.
That was a good first read though. Yeah. Good first read, that's what the first read is all about.
So the other one kind of hand in hand with this one, which is the IJOC, the volunteers. It seemed like there was like, they sort of leverage each other.
This is the criminal, this is the workplace.
I went on section D supervision. I just had a hard time getting that first sentence.
There's a lot of verbiage there.
Only serve in the capacity of assist to see either of those requirements in the RSA. Is there?
We talked about that and given the school space and just the responsibilities for a volunteer that having the supervision on top was important to me.
Well, there are two topics, supervision, I, I get, I understand how and what more easily, but it said, specifically says they can only be in a system. What if somebody volunteers, somebody that's just amazing and they want to like.
Well, I think.
Full time instruction.
But they, a volunteer should never be in charge.
Should never be in charge, shouldn't be the teacher.
They should not be in charge of having to make the curriculum, of having to do the grading, having to do all of that jazz, that's your teacher. So they might be good at coming in and, for example, they're a great literacy teacher, so maybe they take a small group and that's fine, but there's still no supervision of the classroom teacher, they're all on the same page. Yeah, so that, so depending, I would assume that the volunteer, if it was a K1, a K1 classroom, that person's checking in with Mary Beth to make sure that they know what they're supposed to be doing during that time, Mary Beth is giving them the expectations, they're not making up their own.
Okay, it just seemed a little bit restrictive to me in not, I didn't really see the reason why you need to restrict it. But I do understand the supervision.
Yeah, and they need to be supervised.
When I hear assistant, I think, you know, like just a little, like a little helper.
Yeah.
Like, maybe somebody wants to come in and act in a bigger capacity, but still be supervised.
I think the challenge would be the difference of the certification possibly, but you're having a certified teacher providing materials versus volunteer, they could be skilled, they might have information, they're not a certified teacher providing direct materials. That would be alarming to me as a teacher. So the assistant isn't so much, they're, their job is to check the teacher and the teacher's the direction of materials still, so that the teacher is still.
Public system instruction has to be provided by a licensed or by teachers, so they're kind of limited because unless they're a licensed certified person, they can't, they can't take that, that teacher role. They can help.
They can assist.
They are kind of stuck at that assistant level.
Okay. Well, then it seems like.
I think it's more a matter of semantics, like
Yeah.
Like in the scenario you're talking about, the teacher might have somebody coming in who's a complete expert in some area and the teacher couldn't possibly provide the information to the students in such a way as this.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
The teacher has to be the one held responsible for the overall.
With a collective, the teacher, they could come in and say, I have this expertise. Let's talk about maybe this relevant, the certified teacher is assigned, how that could be incorporated, that way it's coming from a professional certified teacher, and the school has to be hired.
Right, if there's a requirement that.
It doesn't matter who is responsible for the education of the kids, and that's always going to be the teacher.
If there's already a requirement that they need to be a certified teacher, though, then this is really an unnecessary line because it's already stipulated by law that they, they have to be, right?
We felt like it was the first thing that was clear that the role was assist. It wasn't in a, we weren't trying to make it a limiting way, but just so that was a position where a teacher would have to like one person recognition and all, so it's about like this just to hear, this expectation of volunteers.
Yep.
When they enter the school and volunteer their time.
So basically, you don't want to have a volunteer doing anything in a strong arm.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right, so.
So I think it's just like where we have different understandings of what the board assistant is. It is all, I think that's what it comes down to, and that's where my question is coming from. I think this, this segment could total sense though.
How about assisting, capacity of assisting, because it does actually change the.
Or you could just make it one sentence that says all volunteers would be required to work under the supervision of certified staff.
There you go.
And this not even.
On the document?
Am I making a note in my minutes or are you just changing it?
I, I am making a note in the document.
Not, yeah, Nicole, yeah. Just putting, just highlighting.
Under the supervision of. It accomplishes what we're looking for, doesn't add any confusion, but it can't. That was, that was it.
Two first reads. That's good.
With good information.
Yeah, awesome.
I did not get this one yet.
It's pretty short.
Pretty straightforward. The membership, yeah. So we can move that to a second read? Okay. And the final one is restraints and seclusion, which was not. Yes, we did. It's defined here.
We removed a lot.
Or restraint.
Basically telling you what you can't do.
Correct.
So you're not hearing the heck out of a girl.
It's like different.
Yeah, I'll probably have to get this one.
If I do that report, I like putting zeros.
Yeah.
It's always the goal.
All right. So Erin did not get to.
Cruz, that one?
Right. So, so then EB, GB, CD and IJ, oh, right? AKA.
So we are not saying that we've done a first read of restraints and.
No, no, that'll go back to a first read. So the workplace safety. Yep, first read, criminal records. Done. Yep. All right. Hang on. Let me just mark these online. Volunteers. Volunteers is done, goes to a second and restraints stays at a first.
Be approved on the third.
And we.
And criminal policies to see if you're, you're.
Yep, I'm good. We did what we needed to do back then. One will stay, three will move forward, one is approved. This one just next year, they all move to second read. This one. Awesome. We have policies.
Shall we move on?
Yeah.
Strategic planning committee. I'll make it short and sweet. We had a pretty good meeting yesterday where we finalized our drafts of a vision statement and a mission statement. And our next order of business will be to perform a SWOT analysis for the district, which is where you analyze your strengths and weaknesses, which is sort of internal look and then you examine opportunities and threats, which is more external and use that to inform a strategy.
Do you say SWOT?
SWOT. That will be at next month's meeting. And like I mentioned earlier, we're going to try to get all this work done ahead of the budgeting season because I know our meetings pick up then and plus now of course we have PS and implications too. So we'll try to move along. Our next meeting is going to be August. It's the day before the next board meeting, August 15th.
No, she had to cancel it.
She asked for a new date. Can we talk about a new date? Just, you know, while we're all sitting here?
Sure. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty flexible. I think Amanda's schedule can be difficult and I think.
Online to the group in our email, the ninth or the sixth. You know, I'm not. Yeah, that's flexible schedule.
What monthly?
August.
So 23rd, 23rd staying. That'd be good.
Okay. School board meeting actually would normally be on the it's, right?
It is the 15th.
I, so I won't be able to be there for that.
Oh.
You can come to Kate for my cousin's wedding.
Oh, nice. Well, can we have a meeting on the.
That's our next meeting. So we should in fact talk about that date.
Yes, so that is.
And I, yeah, it did dawn me because I originally had it in for the first Tuesday on August 1st. We moved it.
The third Tuesday is our meeting dates.
I didn't know.
I have, yeah, 15th.
Yes.
So I could do it the week before, the week after, but the school board meeting, the eighth or the 22nd. We want to keep them on. Well, that might.
The eighth, the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday, the other one?
Second and fourth, right?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth, select board.
So Tuesdays, that's.
So it either has to be August 1st or 29th.
How many meetings do you have that day?
What? No, it's just, I just got off of summer school.
It's summer. Wait.
No breaks for you.
No break for you. No, no, August.
But we're not meeting.
We got a plan for August.
How long?
The whole week.
The whole week?
Okay.
Take my one vacation.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. What about Monday, the 21st?
Nope.
Just kidding on the Monday. How about Wednesday, the 23rd?
Yes.
And instead of strategic planning, we will do a school board meeting on Wednesday, the 23rd.
That's fine.
Is everybody okay on the Wednesday?
On the 23rd? Was the 23rd the date that we picked for the next?
Rather than.
Like seconds before this.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna move that one. We actually, we actually could move it over here.
No, because he's supposed to be in it.
Oh, that's right.
So our normal school board meeting would be the day before that. Is that what you're getting at?
Well, it would be the week before then. Would be the 15th.
Just postpone our meeting for a week.
So the Wednesday though.
To the Wednesday, not a Tuesday.
Wednesday.
Cause usually we meet on Tuesdays.
And you're wanting to do that just so you can double up this with the strategic planning?
No, we're doing this because Erin's on vacation. So we're trying to find a new date and it cannot be the following Tuesday because.
Got it.
And the select word is on the Tuesday.
Correct. So the 23rd, Nicole's writing it. In pen, even though I already wrote it.
We'll think about strategic planning.
Another day.
Another day. Work on that.
Okay. So that needs to be updated on a lot of stuff.
So I, for those of you who might be doing scheduling, I cannot do the 24th. That's, that's a no-no for me.
That's a no-no.
23rd seems to be okay.
23rd is good.
You're gonna follow the silent conversation.
You just have to kind of. There you go.
Okay, okay. So we're good with that. Last section, previous items. We've already covered some of these in earlier sections. Contracts. Earlier conversations. So I think we're okay. But Sunape contract, that's a big one. That got, you know, out an updated version today to you guys. So I can give you the, the main points. So Frank and I had two meetings with their superintendent and not the second, and their business administrator was there for the second, not the first.
So two meetings with their super and board chair.
Now, is this a paid contract in, in reference to adding them as?
Yeah.
Therefore modifying the contract or reflecting something?
So, and then we had their bus transportation person with her for the last one because that was the biggest part of our conversation. And the main points are, let's see. Maintain the same tuition, which currently is 15,000.
15 and 16.
Up for middle school and 16,000 for high school. They would set themselves as a school record, meaning that they would accept any students that we send their way. So there would be no more interview process or vetting process where all of our kids can go to Sunape. They would also provide a bus that would make one pickup in point. And that would be included. That would be included in the tuition and I'll come back to it because there's an asterisk. And it would be for an initial three-year term, then it would renew annually. After that, they would have the ability to adjust their tuition rates each year, which we talked about a little with them. The nervousness around that is that they could just say, hey, we're going to raise our tuition this year. But I think after talking to them, we felt be confident that we don't have to worry about that as much based on the way that they approach their tuition setting. Whereas Newport uses this mysterious formula of the membership and whatnot. Sunape really bases it on what is a competitive rate with the area schools. So historically they have made themselves competitive with Lemster, I believe.
Fall Mountain.
Okay. Yep. And so, and that actually bears out because they have not raised their rates in quite a while. And so they're, they're viewing it as cost separately. Yeah. So they want to attract, what it comes down to. So they have an incentive to keep their price stable over the years. So that's good. And we talked about if the contract has not, if anything happens, the contract gets terminated. What happens to cars that are there? Basically they would be allowed to stay in Sunape and they would transition back into like their current which is a tuition student. But they wouldn't be like suddenly asked to leave. They would still be able to maintain their. Yeah. So on transportation specifically, their main worry was that we would, they would offer us a bus and suddenly everybody was starting using the bus with them. We would have any extra students going, sort of a deficit to them. So the way we worked it out is that currently they have capacity, 14 students on their existing, sorry, 12 students on their existing bus that picks up their last stop is at Ryder Corner. And so we could put up to 12 students on the bus at no additional charge. We would expect that more students would go to Sunape once we have transportation. And they're willing to accept all students. So you can imagine that there'll be more students coming. They said that it would cost them 14,000 to give us that extra capacity to get it to 14. Then after 14, it would cost them 25,000 because at that point they would have to give us their own, our.
Your own bus.
Which means the driver's time, fuel costs and all that. So that's, that can be paid for by two students. So that's why they said anything for 14, we're going to give you a bus. So if it's under 14, if it's under 15 students, we would have to make a choice that either it's first come, first served on the 12 slots or we're going to pony up $14,000 for the extra two kids. My guess is we get over the 14 students once they're once the contract change is put into place and that we don't have an issue with that. So I'd be happy with the contract. I think it's going to open a lot of doors for our students. It's going to be one of the top ranks in the state and the price is better than awards. That's a benefit as well. And I think that with transportation being a major barrier for a lot of families, that that would be eliminated by having the bus in the contract. So that's the sum of the contract. And what I would like to do is to authorize Frank to be able to execute that contract. Should Airport also authorize their superintendent? Unless you guys have any issues that we want to go after, but.
I was actually, so the blessing was happening after my first
Yeah.
Review of the contract. So that is a little bit lenient to me. But you were telling that very well just now. So I.
Shout out, shout out to Erin. Erin finessed that agreement very smoothly.
Sounds like more than once.
Did a really nice job.
He's worked on it more than once, I said.
Yeah, because we started out having to pay them 25,000. So we get two kids, it's free. And that's because he kept working it. Great job.
Well, I think that they're, they're really interested.
They're interested in it.
Yeah, and you keyed into it.
Yeah, they, they came out right first.
It was really nice because the, the atmosphere was very win-win. So you're happy, we're happy.
You know what we have? Is you, we have a strip under here. Beth is like on it today. You should.
I need that. Here you go. Here, I think we can unplug. Here you go.
Oh, my owl. Tom is still on here. Tom Moore.
Sorry, Tom. You don't have any juice in your computer? Oh, here, I can plug it back in.
Understand it pretty well.
I honestly didn't have any questions on it. I had some, as you could see.
Yeah, like grammatical.
Right, some grammatical things, but I was really happy with it. I agree through it two times.
We tried to like take.
It's really based on our new board.
Right.
Base of it.
Yeah.
But we also cleaned it up quite a lot. Because the language in the new board one was a little messy and confusing in some places. So we.
Yeah. So the special ed.
On the appendix.
I didn't, I did. You did. There was no appendix. Right, appendix A. Yeah, that's fine. At the time when I was doing it.
So that's, that's an important point I forgot to mention. But basically your base services are going to be covered under the supervision, which I forget all the things that aren't covered, but it's.
Case manager, yeah, the basic, yeah.
And then if any additional services are required that aren't already covered by basically their existing overhead, then we'll get charged based on a menu of potential charges. So the appendix spells out what those charges would be. Some of them are like black and white. This is the hourly rate or this, that's the hourly rate. Few of them are, you know, whatever we can, whatever contract we're able to procure.
Right.
So that was part of the discussion around keeping tuition low, the trade-off is we might have to pay a little bit extra for our students that need more services.
Which I would prefer if that way because then you know what you're paying for. And I understand that Newport doesn't include a lot of those services for our students in their tuition amount, but not all of them need it and we don't know really what those are. So I mean, money by not doing it that way. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I much prefer it as well. So I think.
Yeah. And I think this is going to be a great bargaining tool. Well, I'm hoping. With our other anchor school. So I appreciate all the time and effort you guys have put into this. Thank you. And I'm happy to give Frank permission to.
Make that motion?
Yes. Yeah, to. To sign that with the Sunape superintendent.
I like that appendix a lot. This is, this is the best I've seen out of any of them.
Yeah, I thought it was really well.
Yeah, this is really well spelled out.
Can we, is that, has that been added to our drive?
I'll put it in right now. Okay.
Talking about things in drives, I don't know where any of these meeting minutes are that I'm supposed to be posting. I don't think they're in the drive.
Folder in school board folder.
So not, so it's not under the.
I don't have that one.
Okay, thank you. In the past, they were put in the month.
She's loading.
So that's where I was looking. My apologies. So now.
This is what it looks like. Scroll down there. It just.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's clear. I mean, you know exactly. And it's clear on their side too, you know, so then there's no question about what you're paying for.
One thing that isn't perfectly clear is around the transportation. They've sort of said every year we're going to tell you how many minimum.
That was a little wonky.
It was.
That was a little wonky.
That might be something we can still.
We can still refine.
But I think directionally is where we want.
I, I know it's malleable, it's workable.
Yeah.
That because he was just trying to quickly.
Yeah.
Give people what they needed. And so I know. And so I know they're, they're gonna give us what we need.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, because we, we all really spelled out a lot of detail.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm, that's good, I'm good. Yep.
Very happy with that.
No, no, they're coming up here.
Well, then I will make a motion to authorize Frank to execute the revised contract with Sunapee. Has written. Any second.
Thirty.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right now. So he, his, his board meets tomorrow, I think.
You're sending.
About the time, do you mind if you bring that up or just?
I don't think so, it's.
I emailed that.
We'll go meet again.
Hang on.
I don't remember if you were on, you know, what I was responding to today.
Uh, can I forward it to you, because I don't know how to, hang on, wait, I'm gonna do this.
Yeah, I couldn't say that into the drive, because it's just remembering that I have.
We have Ian, oh, right, I'm sharing greater.
Okay. Oh, bye. All right, hang on. Saved to drive, but I wanted. Oh, no. I just wanted to move it to that drive.
Oh, you're.
All right. Okay, do we want to go back to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so back to strategic planning, sorry.
Yep.
We have to fill the vacancy on the, that committee. So there have been two people that have put their names forward, Sharon Rader.
Yes.
And Ian Underwood.
Okay.
So, for which committee?
Strategic.
My preference would be to have Sharon join the committee, she attended the last one, but not this one, the one before. I thought, did a great job of just jumping in, she showed a lot of interest, and I think she represents a good demographic in town, so between those two, I, I, my vote.
Whose decision is it, is it the committee?
It's our, no, it's.
It's the board. Oh, well, you know.
And Ian has not been to any meetings.
Okay.
This year, I think, I think I invited him last year.
Uh, if anything, he would have shown up virtually, but I think he only did policy committee meetings.
Should we need a vote on that?
Yeah, I just was waiting for Angie's vote, I was just thinking.
Yeah, I'm just. I'm going to base, I'm going to go with your recommendation. I haven't been to any of those meetings, so I, I second the Sharon Rader nomination or whatever.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's writing the email, Sharon Rader? Told to notify, we should notify.
Yeah, yeah, why don't you do that? I think Sharon emailed you anyways, right, so you should.
Yeah.
And I think that was it, because the rest of our previous business list, we've already covered. And unless Ed has anything to come forward with, I think our public has left, so.
I had a quick public if I can, I know it's a super long meeting, and I wish that the public hadn't left, I just wanted to share something about the tech center, they just had their celebration where they honored a bunch of their students, and two Croydon students were awarded the, what's it called?
Certification.
Certification of excellence in their courses, so my son gained one of them in welding, my nephew Caleb Putem Sunapee took the automotive class at Vocational Center, and was awarded the certificate of excellence there. And then Thomas Biker was also honored and mentioned for his internship that he did at Hartford Eisenhower in Newport as part of his welding class, and they had him go over a production process and do an assessment using skills that he had learned in welding, and from his assessment, he made suggestions to cut the time of production of that part by approximately eighty percent, resulting in increased production as well as decreasing the production time.
Wow.
So I thought that was pretty amazing for three of ours, and actually, all of our students take vocational classes there, so Warren Thorson was mentioned, I am unsure of the class that she takes, and then Ashley Cybrick as well, so that was pretty great to be a part of and see our students excelling there. So I'm, I'm pretty thankful for that program. Yeah, so anyways, I just wanted to do, yeah, quickly mention that.
Non-public?
Shall.
Non-public motion.
Yeah, which section are we doing this under? This is. Oh, hiring of any person, maybe it's that one. Is that what you're?
So RSA ninety-one A. Ninety-one A, three, colon, A, colon, three, two, A.
A or B?
A or B, you could put A and B. I don't have the whole. It's on the bottom of, yeah, A, it could be A and B.
I'm just doing my numbers number one and two.
Oh, I'm on, I have A and B. Well, that's interesting. Oh, that's good. Okay, so I move that we go into, can I do it?
Sure, no, you go for it.
Okay, I move that we go into non-public under RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, A and B, A and B.
Or one and two.
Or one and two.
Depending on what yours looks like.
Yeah, okay.
All those are good.
Aye.
You can make any motion you like.
Sorry, Ed.